In the webinar.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, everyone in the audience and online. My name is Darren Gerard. I'm with Maricopa County Planning and Development. This is the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, Commission Public Hearing, scheduled for this date. We do not have a chairman or vice chairman present. So we need the commissioners who are here today to appoint a appoint a temporary chairman for this meeting. And then, and then we can proceed with our actions.
Darren.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend Commissioner Arnett to chair the meeting. Make a motion.
Let's still move.
I second that motion.
So that's an appropriate motion. I'm getting yes from our legal team. Okay, so there's a motion. There's a second individual roll call. Like, let's go ahead and do that, Rosalie, just since we're part in person, part virtual.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Arnett.
I guess. Yes.
All right, we have a vote of five for Commissioner Arnett to chair this hearing.
So we're coming at this a little backwards. We've started, just to confirm, I didn't ask them to start the broadcast. We've already started, right? Okay, we've already started. So I guess that wasn't our verification of quorum. So why don't we just go ahead and do roll call for the record? We call this meeting to order. And now, sorry for the awkward nature of this, but now let's go ahead and call roll call and establish our quorum for the record.
Chairman Schlesser. Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Lindblum. Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. A few announcements before we begin our meeting here today. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws, ARS 38, 431. These agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting at the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to the hearing. So you can access those there. The reports prepared for each agenda item shall become part of the permanent record for each case with respect to the hearing process. They'll cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda, unless otherwise agreed by the commission. We may not make a couple of changes on that today. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance and raise your hand in the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed shall be at the discretion of the acting chair. Just to clarify that, we want to hear from everyone that's here today. We have a lot of people here. So if you want to speak, you can fill out a card with Rosalie. We have a lot up here right now. We're going to limit those to two minutes. So we can have everyone hear that, that will give a little more discretion to the applicant to do their presentation with some rebuttal. So we'll go to that point. But we want to, in an effort to hear from everyone, and I would encourage everyone to add new things. We kind of know where you're at by your, by what you checked in your opposition or support. But any new information would be helpful for us as a commission, as opposed to repeating the same things. That will be very helpful for us. So I think that is. And just so you, we'll do a vote by a roll call vote. And we will, because we have some online, and we will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. If you do okay on the announcements, we'll be okay. All right, let's start with the matter of the minutes. You know what? I did that out of work. Thank you very much. And this is our, our chairman who did this. So we, all those would like to join and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with that now.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, the item of the minutes, these are the minutes from our September 14th meeting. Are there any comments or questions by anyone on the commission? Hearing none, we will accept those into the record as presented by staff. We'll move on to our consent agenda, understanding that there might be a circumstance with a couple of our agenda items. What, will you address that, please, Darren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In the essence of time due to the size of the crowd that wishes to speak, I note that there, we have received two letters of opposition in regard to case CPA 2023-012. It has a companion case, C 2023-069, which we do not have any specific opposition for. This is Belmont Mixed Use and Desert Studios. If the opposition, again, the two letters, if those authors are not here today, we can move those on to the consent item if you chose, wish to entertain.
Thank you. Is the opposition for cases 13 and 14, are they here in the audience today? Would you let me know if you're here? We want to make sure you're, are you, just make sure virtually, are you online? IT team, is there anyone with this, for this case?
No one has indicated that they wish to speak at this point.
Okay, so with that, with that information on agenda items 13 and 14, those two cases will be moved to the consent agenda. And with that, as long as we've covered everything legally, looking for head nods, then we're ready to go. Would you please present our consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have 12 items on consent today. They are CPA 2023-011, known as Maricopa Energy Center in District 5. It's a major comprehensive plan amendment to change land use designation in the county comprehensive plan to utilities for 1,150 acres between I-10 on the north, 491st Avenue on the east, Thomas Road to the south, and 531st Avenue to the west. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval. CPA 2023-013, known as Desert Gem Solar and Storage Project in District 5, is a major comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation of the old US Highway 80 area plan to utilities for 4,267 acres along US, old US Highway 80 at Patterson Road. There's no known opposition. The recommendation is for approval. Agenda item three is C 2021-065, known as AZ Happy Valley Royal Care LLC in District 4. It's a special use permit for assisted living facility on a three-quarter acre site at the northwest corner of 83rd Avenue in Mariposa Grande. There's no known opposition. The approval in paragraph 18, the recommendation in paragraph 18 is for approval, subject to conditions A through K. See 2021-128, known as Crown Castle Cashin 806-982. District 5 is a modification of condition to previously approved special use permit in the seat for wireless communication facility in the C3 zoning district to set the expiration date at 2048. This is on a site located east of the northeast corner of Buckeye Road and Avondale Boulevard. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval in paragraph 11, subject to conditions A through J. Item five is Z 2022-212, known as 5251 South 43rd Avenue Rezone in District 5. It's a rezone to industrial to IUPD for a proximate five-acre site near the northeast corner of Sunland Avenue and 43rd Avenue in Levine. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 14 is for approval, subject to conditions A through G. Case Z 2022-222, known as The Grove Bible Church in District 1, is a special use permit for a group care facility of an educational institution in the Rural 43 zoning district on a six-acre site east of the northeast corner of Gilbert Road and Queen Creek Road in the Chandler area. There is no known opposition. The city of Chandler did originally oppose any rezoning to commercial or multifamily residential, but are okay with the special use permit. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through K in paragraph 16. Case Z 2023-030, known as US AZ 7049 Tolleson Cell Tower SGP in District 4. It's a special use permit for a wireless communication facility in the Rural 43 zoning district for a 3.6-acre site near the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Road and 107th Avenue. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 12 is for approval, subject to conditions A through H. Items eight and nine are Z 2023-041 and Z 2023-042, respectively, known as Broadway, 91st Avenue Storage Facility in District 5. This is a, the first request is a zone change to C2CUPD. The second request is a special use permit in the C2CUPD zoning district for commercial storage of vehicles on a 4.3-acre site within the overall site of 15 acres, generally located one quarter mile from the southwest corner of 91st Avenue and Broadway in the Levine area. There's no known opposition. The recommendations are for approval of the zoning in paragraph 16, subject to conditions A through G, and approval of the special use permit in paragraph 17, subject to conditions A through G. Item 10 is Z 2023-078, known as Camino del Sol Pet Cemetery in District 4. It's a special use permit for a pet cemetery in the C2 zoning district for a 1.4-acre site at the southeast corner of Camino del Sol and 138th Avenue in Sun City West area. There's no opposition received to date. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through H in paragraph 12. And then agenda item 13 is CPA 2023-012 Belmont Mixed Use in District 4. This is a major comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation to mixed use for 1,402 acres, generally located north of I-10 and west of 399th Avenue. There have been two letters of opposition received. You noted in your handout, the recommendation is for approval. And there's an associated rezoning, Z 2023-069, known as Desert Studios in District 4. This is a zone change to industrial to IUPD for 320 acres at the northwest corner of Thomas Road and 339th Avenue. There's no known opposition. The recommendation, paragraph 10, is for approval, subject to conditions A through G. And that concludes today's consent agenda. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions for Mr. Gerard or staff or anyone else on the commission? All right, anyone, these are consent items. Anyone wishing to speak on these cases, we will want to give you that opportunity now. Just confirm with our IT team, is there anyone that wishes to speak or has a hand raised?
I'm not aware of anyone online.
Thank you. So hearing no other further, we'll, any discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda as presented.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, I believe that was Mr. Swart.
Yes, sir.
We will go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison. Commissioner Landau.
Yes, except on consent agenda item two, note case number CPA 2023-013, for which I'm recusing myself.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Chairman Arnett.
Yes.
Chairman, that's.
Great, that's, you paid for yourself here today, Mr. Beck. Thank you very much. But stick around, we might need you. So let's go ahead and do that. So do we need to strike anything? Perfect, and that was at agenda item number two. Okay, so, so as we said, so for the record, consent to item, and the motion made by Commissioner Landau was for every item except for number two. And so, and that approved unanimously. And let's move on and make a separate motion now for agenda item number two. I'll entertain that motion now.
Commissioner.
Give us just a second. Anyone online want to make, I'll make the motion. I'll move that we approve item number two as presented by staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now let's go ahead. Thank you, and let's do a roll call vote now.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Chairman Arnett.
Yes.
Chairman, that's a vote of an approval by a vote of four to zero for that's for item number two.
Perfect, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, we now move on to our regular agenda. And if you would please present our first case.
Good morning, Commissioners. Agenda item number 11, KC 2022-171 in Supervisor District 4, is a special use permit request for Gambler's Row for an equestrian event facility within RV park in the Rural 43 zoning district. The site is located in the Aguila area approximately 500 feet west of the southwest corner of Pete Road and Eagle Eye Road. Is this better? The site is located in the Aguila area approximately 500 feet west of the southwest corner of Pete Road and Eagle Eye Road, and is comprised of approximately 74.62 acres. The current site is vacant and surrounded by scattered residential and vacant lots. Approximately 560 acres surrounding the subject's site to the north and south are owned by the applicant. 140 acres adjacent to the west was recently recommended for approval for a preliminary platte known as Ben Jordan Acres for 45 residential lots, also currently owned by the applicant. The proposed development would be known as Gambler's Row and would include two outdoor arenas, one indoor arena, cattle holding pens, 298 parking stalls, areas for retail and concession vendors, and an announcer's booth. The applicant is proposing to have events seasonally during the months of October through March in the daylight hours. Additionally, the applicant is proposing two RV parks within Gambler's Row, which would consist of 140 spaces with three comfort stations. The RV parks will be operated as part of the equestrian facility for event participants. Horse stalls are proposed to be located east of the RV parks for residents to rent for their horses. Gambler's Row would have a right-of-way along the southern portion of the site, which would be known as Gambler's Way. Access to the site would be along Gambler's Way for participants and spectators. And for RVs, hay, and cattle trucks, the access would be along the west portion of the site, known as 519th Avenue. Staff notes that the proposed use is a high-intensity, large-scale use, which may be appropriate for this location. And with the proposed, proposed conditions could make the site work with the surrounding residential and rural neighborhood. Staff has received a total of 448 letters of support and 176 letters of opposition. Staff notes that most of the letters are duplicates, with 78 surrounding properties being in opposition and 177 surrounding properties being in support. The neighbors in opposition brought up concerns regarding drainage, dust, lighting, noise, traffic, and manure disposal. Staff recognizes the applicant's additional public outreach efforts by having two neighborhood meetings to discuss the neighbors' concerns. But staff still continue to receive opposition for the case throughout the citizen participation process. There is no conditions that mitigate dust, lighting, or noise, but the applicant is proposing to water the site to mitigate dust. Due to the level of opposition, staff cannot support this request and recommends denial. However, if the commission chooses to adopt a motion to recommend approval, staff offers condition A through K outlined in the staff report. At this time, I'm open to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Any questions by the commission for staff at this point? All right, hearing none now, I'm sure there'll be plenty. Let's, is the applicant here? I don't know. Let me go through my card here. Just state your name for the record and, and please proceed with your presentation. And even though we're going to limit some of the time with everyone to speak, we're going to give the applicant a little more time, which is appropriate here. But state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Can you hear me? Oh, good. Good morning. For the record, my name is Shannon Whitaker with Garrison 48. I'm actually here representing the applicant, which is JTL Properties, and their project Gambler's Row. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and thank you to all the members of Aguila, Forepa, and Wickenburg, all of those community members that were able to drive down here today and give their vow of support, but also opposition. So Gambler's Row, it brings a very unique opportunity to the community of Aguila. We're going to be putting in an investment of $20 million into that community that will bring economic growth, workforce development, while respecting the public health and safety of the residents of Aguila and the surrounding community neighborhoods. Are we able to change the slides as I, okay, great. Yep, perfect. So I really want to hone in on the fact that this is going to bring economic development and the workforce development. We're projecting about 300 new jobs in the area. And the economic growth that our applicant has been able to have discussions with and, and people get really excited for are listed in this slide right here. I also want to note that, thank you, staff, for putting together a great report. One of the notes in the report was, staff notes that the proposed event facility with an RV park is a high-intensity, large-scale use, which is appropriate for the location, and the proposed conditions could make the site work with the surrounding residential rural neighborhood. Next slide. So respecting the planning and zoning and the Planning and Development Department here at Maricopa County, we also obviously participated in the citizen review process. And we had two public hearings and communicated with the citizens using various different methods, one being the community-specific social media. We used email, public spaces, all of the businesses in the surrounding area, which are also listed here in support. We were able to put up flyers and get everyone there, as many people as we could, to answer any questions that anyone had. We really wanted to make sure that we were meeting the concerns and the issues of the residents, because we're going to be their neighbors, hopefully, here soon. So overall, the community of Aguila supports this project at three-fourths of the area. And as you can see, this was also the map from staff's report. So the first public hearing, both public hearings, we actually had, I don't know, it was maybe a mile away from the location at the fire station there. And we had a pretty good turnout. Spent about an hour and a half at the last one, where the last 30 minutes was a very good discussion and just answering all those outstanding concerns. Granted, a lot of them are kind of out of our control, but we, we do, we do respect the, the concerns of the neighbors. Next slide. So I have a whole host of experts behind me that are able to dive more deeply into these issues that were raised during the two public hearings and some of the communication that we had with the residents and the nearby neighbors. One being manure odor, which is actually ADEQ's regulations that we have to be in compliance with. And then the runoff in groundwater contamination and water use, which we have to be in compliance with for Aguila Water Company Water Assurance. And that would all go ultimately through the Corporation Commission. Next slide. Runway drainage, we are in compliance with the current Maricopa County drainage requirements and regulations. And then the aviation concerns, we actually have a pretty good-sized buffer between where the property is actually going to be built on and the residents that are the closest surrounding area. And then, again, with ammonia and nitrate concentration, ADEQ regulations that we have to be in compliance with. And they only allow the use of conventional septic tank and disposal trenches for wastewater disposal, which we have, we have planned out and, and more, which you'll, you'll hear more about. I think that's the end. Is that the end of the slide? Oh, we got one more. Dust air pollution, so we're going to have two $4,000, or two 4,000-gallon water trucks. In 7.5 hours, these two trucks can apply 40,000 gallons of water to all the roads, streets, arenas, pens, and parking areas. The light pollution, we, we actually worked with staff on that. And I believe the recommendations are, are great, where we really do take into consideration the fact that we're going to have an event here, and the light will have to go on during the nighttime, considering the event that we're having. But the exterior lighting will be designed and installed to prevent light projection upward, as required by Maricopa County. And then of the 112 planned outdoor events per year, at most 56 events will require the use of arena lights for at most three hours. As far as traffic goes, the, the traffic will naturally be divided between the north and the south of Eagle Eye Road. And the existing roads will be paved, widened, and seen on the map, provided in, in my presentation. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm going to let the experts come up and talk about these issues a little bit more for you. And we hope to get your approval today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if there's the experts, I hope they're on the card. If they're not, if the experts want to speak on it, then they can fill out a card, and then I'll call on you here, but now that we've heard from the applicant. So otherwise, you can be there handy to address concerns if you want. Okay?
Chairman, I'm Jim Downing.
Well, hold on one second. Hold on one second. Have you filled, I don't know that I, oh, there you are. We'll call on you first then, sir. Jim, got you right here. Go ahead, please, sir.
I'm one of the engineers for the project. And I would just like to add a little bit to what Shannon has already said.
And I don't mean to interrupt you here. Now the applicant spoke. We'll give, to be fair, those in support and others, we'll give a couple of minutes on each side if you'd just help me with that, staff. Thanks, you for keeping us straight. So we'll give a little leeway. Thank you, Jim. Go, go ahead. But there will be a limit to it at some point. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The first issue I'd like to talk about is drainage. I want to reinforce what Shannon said. We are bound by the drainage ordinances and regulations of Maricopa County. The drainage design on this project will be whatever those regulations and ordinances say they have to be. I did also hear that there was some concern about Eagle Eye Road and drainage on Eagle Eye Road. And I believe that concern involves an area north of our project where grass wash crosses Eagle Eye Road. Grass wash is a mapped floodplain. Grass wash has been flowing over Eagle Eye Road. Well, I moved out there in 1980, and it was going across Eagle Eye Road then. So it's been a while. And the, the next thing that I would like to bring up is the groundwater in this area is 500 feet deep. And the, the potable water supplier for this project is going to be Aguila Water Services. Any additions to Aguila Water Services' distribution system to serve our project will have to be approved by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, as well as the Arizona Corporation Commission. Aguila Water Services is a regulated utility. One of the provisions in the ADEQ regulations that we'll have to live with is that adding additional customers to their system, Aguila Water Services' system cannot diminish the quality of service to the existing customers. ADEQ will require us to do whatever's necessary to keep that from happening. We'll also have to have a line extension agreement with Aguila Water Services approved by the ACC. We, there will be also non-potable water uses. For that, we will drill a well, and we will supply our own water for livestock watering, for dust control, that sort of thing. But the, the total water consumption for this project, potable and non-potable water, is roughly the amount of water that it takes to irrigate 11 acres of cattle. that it takes to irrigate 11 acres of cantaloupes. In the Agila area, I think there's about 8,000 acres of cantaloupes. That gives you a perspective on how much water we're going to be using. With respect to manure, both from cattle and horses and urine, the, some of the opposition letters referred to the project as a feedlot. It's not a feedlot. The average area for one animal in a feedlot is 300 square feet. And those animals weigh on the average 1,000 pounds. The cattle we use in this project weigh 500 pounds. And they're living on 3,900 square feet instead of 300. So the disposal density of urine and manure is not the same. It's a lot less. In terms of the groundwater contamination, typically that's talking about nitrates or total nitrogen. ADEQ allows the use of conventional septic tanks and disposal trenches as long as the total nitrogen disposal density is less than .088 pounds per acre per day. The disposal density on this project will be .053 pounds per day or 60% of what DEQ allows for conventional septic tanks and disposal trenches. Aviation concerns. I'll just reiterate what Shannon said. There's two north-south runways in the area. One is Eagle Roost. It's a half a mile east of the project. The runway center line of the north-south center line of the runway is a half a mile east of the east boundary of the project. The other is the Sampley runway. It's also north-south. The center line of that runway runs, if you extend it south, it's almost, goes right through the middle of the project. The end of the runway is a half a mile north of the north boundary of the project. Light pollution, she covered that. I don't think, I mean, two 4,000 gallon water trucks running 12 hours a day will keep this place wet. There's not going to be a dust issue. Light pollution, again. Lights are pointed down, not up. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. Just out of curiosity, it's not stipulated or anything, but I'm just more curious. If you only have the 500, what are these, one to two-year-old animals? Why not the big ones? Is this for the rodeo part of it? I'm just more of a curious. I want to be a cowboy, but I'm not, is what I'm saying. Aren't these the one to two-year-olds, these animals?
Well.
Okay, I went too deep.
To make the competition as keen as we can, we like to use the 500 and 600 pounders because they're a lot faster than 1,000 pounds.
Yeah, when we get old, we're slow, right? I get you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for your presentation. State your name.
I'm John Morales. I'm with Hewitt's Alves Engineering Firm. Jim is, he's working with us because he's the expert in this arena. We work more in the subdivisions and land development and that kind of stuff. But the one thing that we do, will be provided, is the paved roads. There will be access, they're worried about the dust control and traffic, but all the roads accessing to the site will be paved. In addition to Pete Road, which is right now is, is pretty much of a mess because I've been out there driving in that small 10-foot road, which is going to benefit the surrounding ownerships. And as well as the drainage, as Jim spoke, what we're, per county standards, we're required to maintain the amount of flow of the drainage going through the site. What comes in is coming out. So we're not adding to the site to any property to the north. So those are the two points I just wanted to make as far as, as far as Hewitt's Alves Engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Any questions for Ms. Morales or any of the others that have presented? And just to ask, was there anyone else to speak as part of the presentation? I'll give plenty of the time, people that are for or against, but as part of your group that's, that's part of your presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. And good morning, Ms. Landals. My name is Senator Janee Shamp and I am here in representation for LD29, along with my seatmate Steve Montenegro and Austin Smith. We are here supporting this project in, as so the economic development and what we see as far as what our constituents are asking for within the area.
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is public comment, not the applicant's presentation.
You are correct, yeah. So what we'll do, we'll call on you just a second, Senator. Thank you very much. Give us just a minute. But we want your people, your technical, we want people that are talking to the design and that. So give us just a minute.
My apologies, thank you.
That's okay. That's okay. So as it relates to the, some of the opposition, we're going to hear some things about why this should not be done. So we want to address those of our traffic, lights, and dust and all that. So anything else? Okay.
Just thank you very much and I stand for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant or any of those that have presented thus far from the commission? All right, hearing none, we will continue. Now, Senator Shamp, we will have you come to the podium and give your presentation. Sorry for that. You should know this more than we do. Come on.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Senator Janee Shamp and I represent District 29, along with Steve Montenegro and Austin Smith, House members that could not be here today. And we are here in support of this project for a multitude of reasons. Our constituents are asking us to be involved in this and to, to show our support because of the development that's happening in the western part of the state when it comes to this type of lifestyle. There is an increasing amount of people coming to our state in the winter. We all know about snowbirds. We know what they do for our economy. This is another section to that where we're having people coming from all across the country to semi-retire and to rope. And so this project, being out in Agila, does a number of things. First of all, I'm not sure if you've been out to Agila. When this, when the I-10 was built, those small towns suffered because now the traffic is not coming back and forth from California. So there's been a lot of decline in these small towns. And so this development, I've spoken with a lot of the business people who unfortunately can't be here today because they're, they're working. But they're in serious support of this because of the development that it's going to bring to the area. The fact that it's going to bring close to 300 jobs. It's going to bring people that are going to spend money. It's going to bring tax dollars to a community that needs it. So the economic development is one side and the other side is that, you know, this is a heritage of our state. The five Cs are very important to this, Senator, and cattle being one of them. And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, our horses, it's kind of hard. 1100-pound steer is not so much fun. 500-pound steer is not so hard, right? Agreed. You get older, they get a little slower, they get bigger, it becomes more difficult. So this operation, there's multitudes of these types of arenas that have been approved and Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors, has been very helpful in understanding the needs of these projects and making sure that they are in compliance. For example, in Morristown with Horns and Hooves, Rancho Rio, and Wickenburg. So this is going to be along those same lines. And we see it as a value and the constituents in my districts are in serious support of this project. And I stand for any questions that you might have.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your thoughts. Any questions for Senator Shamp? All right, hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. And then let's, let's go ahead. Now, we've got a lot of cards here. We're going to go through these. We want everyone to speak. And if staff would help me, we'll keep those comments for about two minutes and then we'll get through this large stack we have here. Next, Guy Terrell, would you come and you'd like to speak? And state your name and address for the record.
As you stated, I'm Guy Terrell. My wife and I initially, alphabetically understood, fully support this operation of Gambler's Row. We'd like to see it happen. And I think the proponents so far have stated well the economic benefits of it. I am an aviator by trade. I've been 40 years at it and the commercial side of it. A crop duster mainly. I'm very familiar with noise pollution issues and one thing and another. And I do believe all the issues that have been brought up, especially by the opponents, most of them were statements, not necessarily problems. We did file a letter with the state and addressed each one of those. So I won't go through those. But I'm not only an aviator, we are horse people also. And I actually own the Corner Lock in Eagle Roost Air Park that is the closest to the facility being proposed. I would ask you review my letter that I did file with the state and consider the issues. But we fully support the operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any questions for Mr. Terrell? Great, thank you very much. I do have a card here for Claudia, does not wish to speak. But let the record note that she is in support of the project. Okay? Next, if we could have Kim Porter come to the microphone. I can lean into it a little bit, is what I'll do. On, oh, on the podium? I think you just have to lean into it. And I'm excited to tell my wife that someone asked me to speak louder. This is going to be exciting.
My name is Kim Porter and I live at Eagle Roost Air Park. And I am opposed to this facility being brought in.
Any specific concerns you'd like to share with the commission or just want to register?
There's my husband and others that can speak a lot.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from, is it Jeanne Wise Taylor? Oh, yeah, the record shows she is, she's opposed to the project. Thank you. I'll read that. Jeanette Isert does not wish to speak and we'll just note her opposition as well. Tamara Zogelman, hope I said that right, also is not wishing to speak, but would like to register her opposition. Cheryl Christie does not wish to speak. We'll note that she is opposed to the project as well and is in attendance today. Steve Boyd does not wish to speak, but is opposed to the project and is in attendance today. We'll give you that opportunity. Step right on up.
Just a couple of issues here after listening to some of the professionals tell us how good it's going to be there. They said they're going to monitor the water in and out. And that place right now is, has just got the natural terrain on it. They, nothing was mentioned of, once they remove that native brush, that runoff is going to increase coming out the flow. There's nothing there to hold the water. So there's, it's going to increase coming off of the Gambler's Row there and what's going into it. The other thing is, they mentioned Hooves and Horns and Rancho Rio as being similar projects there. That's, that's far from the truth. They are very, this is three times, four times as big as Hooves and Horns or Rancho Rio, either one. This is a major development deal. Both of those are just, you know, part-time roping events. This here is going to affect the community. It's going to affect the Eagle Eye Road is what my opposition is on it. There's no highway control there. Who's going to control the traffic? It's going to be up to the individual landlords to go out there and, and stop people from going too fast or, who's going to control it? Is my, one of my, you know, oppositions to it. But anyway, that's all I got there.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Great, next, let's hear from Gary Standhart. Gary here? There you go.
Good morning.
Good day.
This, I'm pretty affected because.
Just for us, just state your name and address for the record.
Standhart, 51728 West Pete Road, Agila.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
The easement for Pete Road goes right across my property, through my property. So I'm real affected by it. And, and I'm not so much against what they're doing. I just don't like the location of it. I think there's better places for it rather than being right by these air parks because it's, you know, historically proven when people move in by an airport or airpark, if they don't fly, they complain about the airplanes. So there's just going to be a perpetual complaint about airplanes and stuff and flying over their, their properties, maybe being blamed if a horse got spooked and got hurt. You know, it opens up lawsuits and stuff like this. And we're in an area where there's thousands of acres that, that could be used for this that wouldn't affect anybody. To me, it makes a lot more sense to put it where it's not going to bother anybody rather than where it bothers most everybody that lives there. So just a, just a common sense kind of thing. The other thing that I haven't heard too much talk about is the conformity to land use. And the land out there is mostly either agricultural or just low-density rural. A large percentage of the properties are like five acres with a house on them and stuff. And now you're bringing in a pretty dramatic commercial operation in the middle of all this. And they talk about their economic development. And, you know, some people want it, some people don't. Most of the people that moved out there didn't move there for economic development. They moved out there for peace and quiet. And if they want, you know, better sources, they can run into Wickenburg or down to Phoenix for stuff. Is that my two-minute timer?
That's it. Well, you got seven seconds left.
I'm not sure I can think or talk that fast, but that's kind of my high point, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your, for your thoughts. Any questions for Gary here? All right, hearing none, thank you, sir. Next, Sherry Iting does not wish to speak, but wants to register that she's opposed to the project. Scott Porter.
Good morning and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Porter. I live at 51314 Pete Road. I live in Eagle Roost Airport. I am the Vice President of Eagle Roost Management. First and one thing I want to say because it brought up a point, the water in Agila is not 500 feet as the very well-paid engineer said. I am a well driller. I've drilled a lot of wells. I know what the well, water is out there. If you drill a 500-foot well in Agila, you're hitting a dry hole. The water table is 600 feet in our airpark. Maybe he took a sample somewhere else. But you have to have a well that's 650, 700 feet. The farmland, as another gentleman brought up, is not using Agila water. They have their own water source, well-water source. This is going to be a good problem for water. This is not per se horse country. When these air parks were brought in, a lot of people have bought property and bringing their horses in. But this is airplane country. I know there are going to be people that say, yeah, yeah, this is horse country. Wickenburg, you go to Wickenburg in the winter, you can hardly go in and get gas because there's so many stock trailers sucking up the pumps, getting, you know, big horse community. Get that. That's not so in Agila. They have arenas, they have other places they can go and ride their horses. We don't have another place to go where we can fly our airplanes. We bought this property for the aviation aspect. We bought this property for the quietness. This project is not zoned for this type of property use. It's residential. It's a slippery slope when you start changing use of a property. Think about your own house and your own peace of mind and something goes in right next door that's going to vastly affect the community. It's, you're laying in bed and you know that's going on. You don't like it, the smell of the livestock, whatever. I mean, you're going to get more and more of this. But please think about the safety aspect of a runway directly in line with this property. It's not a matter of when the next one, if the next one is going to go down. We've already had several planes. It's not a matter of when the next one, if the next one is gonna go down. We've already had several planes in the state trust land that is to the south of Eagle Roost. It's gonna happen again, unfortunately. Cars break, they don't run. Please, please consider the safety aspects and the change of the character of our residential use. A lot of us, this is our retirement homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Porter? All right. Thank you very much. Sue Ley, if you'd like to speak.
Good morning. I'm, I'm Sue Ley. I live at 51410 West Iver Road in Aguila Air, in Eagle Roost Air Park. The Gambler Project is complex only because it wants this location. If accepted, this project will be here today, next week, six months, and many more years. We need to get this right. If the project is approved, the folks at Gambler will have years of regular horse and cow activities and ongoing contests with large crowds. If you live nearby, these events will be all-day noise and dust and traffic makers. Three forces of support they talked about from folks in Aguila are not the neighbors of this project. Keep that in mind. Most of the neighbors are opposed to this project. The folks at Eagle Roost and Sampley Air Parks have enjoyed the facilities for 50 years, and it's highly regulated by the FAA. The Gambler Project will test Aguila's serenity with all the noise and visitors of the horses and cows and the 300 staff that come and go on a daily basis. I'm trying to keep my notes short here. This is not a neighborhood. House permit is a factory of noise and smell that would never be tamed, regardless of the project promises. It will not be a place to sit on the back porch and enjoy Aguila. While the airports are designed to be far away from public activity, it's because of things happen, as Scott mentioned. Things don't always go right with planes, so we need to be careful. Today, we have a project requesting to be located in the path of our takeoff and landings within a distance where the airplane is most vulnerable. Now we have a project applying for a huge business right where airplanes take off in the desert, and you have failed takeoffs. Animals and horses do not fit well together. We've talked to folks who have a lot of cows and horses, and they say it, it never works. Cows get agitated, horses get erratic and try to run and jerk. This, this project, in our opinion, has lots of faults, and we realize that's gonna bring a lot of stench, flies, dust. I know they say they're gonna control it, but I, I don't believe it. I've seen arenas where horses are, and the dust flies even if they're putting water down. So we're opposed to this project only because of the location. You know, if, if they found a better location somewhere not close to neighborhoods like they've selected, we wouldn't be opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Sue? Okay, thank you. Lee Jones, if you'd like to come speak to us.
My name is Lee Jones. We own a home on 20 acres, 51852 West Pete Road in Aguila, which is adjacent and directly north of the proposed project. We own an additional 15-acre parcel and an additional 20-acre parcel adjacent to our home. I'm opposed in the strongest terms possible for this proposed roping facility. We have lived at this site for 30 years, invested heavily in creating our little oasis in the desert south of Aguila. We have always been delighted with our choice, choice for this location because of the quiet rural nature of the area. There are many others like us who have invested large amounts of time and money to make nice homes here as well. Some of the proponents of this don't even live here, as has been mentioned. The ones that do live here are generally opposed as, as I am, and like many of our neighbors, I have several concerns with the large project being built directly uphill and upwind of our property. I'm concerned that so many animals in confined area all winter long will create groundwater contamination, noxious odors, dust, noise, light pollution, huge increases in traffic, as well as water shortages. We are right downhill and, excuse me, right downhill and downwind from this proposed facility. When the wind blows, noxious orders, odors will come our way, and no wall can protect us from that. When a real gully washer of a rainstorm comes, and they do all year long, it won't wait until after they've had a chance to clean up all the manure and urine and so on, but it'll wash downward, and it comes right to our front door. And literally. And stadium lights, light pollution, we talked about that. We do have city water, but it still comes from the same aquifer that they're posting, proposing to suck over 40,000, 40,000 gallons a day to water down the desert for dust control. We simply don't want a large, noisy, polluting, commercial enterprise right next door. After all, the current zoning that's in place specifically prevent, prevents almost everything that this project has.
Thank you, and go ahead and conclude your remarks. Thank you, sir. Any questions for, for Lee? Thank you for your thoughts. Carolyn Jones, if you'd like to speak.
Cut it in half. My name's Carolyn Jones. I live at 51852 West Pete Road. We're directly north of this project. We're the closest house. We live less than 3,000 feet from this project, and we strongly oppose it. As my husband can contest to, I said contest, I meant, well, he did. He contested assent to, I've spent hours and days and weeks studying this project and all the ramifications. The submitted reports that they initially submitted with the county made no mention of the 100 homes that I counted directly downhill, downwind, within 3,000 feet of this project in the form of the two flight park residential areas with FAA-approved runways that we have. When crossing the posed area with aircraft, they're only a few hundred feet off the ground if they're landing or taking off, and we are worried about spooking of horses and cattle resulting in injuries, which has happened on the East Coast and in England, and they have sued airports and airplane people. We're concerned that the heavy traffic is gonna create problems on the roads. The traffic report was done in late May when virtually everyone is gone from the neighborhoods. And they based it on historical data from five years ago, which doesn't reflect the incredible growth that we have seen since COVID. The trucks with horse trailers are gonna be going 50 miles an hour past our two entrances, and they're the only entrances that we have. The water drainage goes through, the settling ponds are their cattle pens. And even if the water drains through and comes out exactly like they say it's supposed to, it's still covered. It's gonna contain poop and urine and fuel. So, and then it does, it cheats right across our properties.
Just conclude, if you would, please. Thank you.
Okay. Just one last thing. We are unincorporated. We have no police. We're 60 minutes from the average response time from police as it is right now. And we just don't think that Gambler's Row fits in with our surrounding properties and the rural intended uses that we have now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any questions for Carolyn? Thank you. Joe Iting, if you'd like to speak.
Good morning. My name's Joe Iting. I live on 48008 North 508th Avenue. It's in the Eagle Roost Air Park. My wife and I moved in there. We, I'm currently a certified flight instructor, and when we looked at air parks to move into, we went from all the way from Florida to Mississippi to Alabama, and we were, we liked this air park because it looks like it was built with the best design criteria. Basically, it set the standard for air parks across the nation. And if you look at FAA best practices, this air park, these air parks fit that when it comes to noise, flight path trajectories, perhaps incidences on the ground. And when we moved in, we found literature of how the, the gentleman built this air park, and he basically started from Aguila, moving the facility, the utilities out towards the air park, but he had all that subdivision offset from the runway so it could minimize the impact of the air park, and that's how he got the utilities out there. And that's why we have good utilities out there at the air park. I give these guys check rides, and so we talk about how to handle airplane instances, no functions after takeoff. And if you talk to the FAA, do we have an FAA representative here? We talked to the FAA. Because there you have scatter plots of where most engine failures in airplanes land, and turning at low altitude is death for pilots. So we teach them, you fly straight ahead and you land a plane into the sagebrush. It's like taking your car at the end of a road at 60 miles an hour into the sagebrush, you can probably survive. But you take this into an RV park, it's not gonna be good for the people on the ground or in the airplane. So my letter talked about safety of the pilots, safety of the people on the ground, and then you really ought to look and see, these two air parks combined during the wintertime have about the same amount of traffic as Buckeye, Wickenburg. There's a lot of airplane traffic that comes in and out of here. So the mindset should be, would you, if this facility was built with the hospital and the RV parks, would you allow, I mean, Gambler's Roost with all the RVs and houses, would you let two air parks be built right next to it with the airport, with the runways facing at this facility? I think you'd have second questions about that. So I stand in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chairman, just to make you aware, I believe we're gonna lose Commissioner Swart at 11, but I believe Commissioner Hernandez signed on for this case and has heard the testimony.
Yeah, and thank you. And you whispered that to me, but for the record, we do have Commissioner Hernandez on for the entirety of this case, so we should be okay. Thank you. Dale Zogelman.
My name is Dale Zogelman. I live at 50807 West William Road in, in Aguila at the Eagle Roost Air Park. You know, we've been to these meetings, and I'm gonna just run this real quick, but I'm not opposed to the project. I'm just opposed to the location. But when they tell us they're gonna put 350 pull, pull, pull-through tractor-trailer rigs there, 150 campus camp spots, 80 workers, six food trucks, 20 houses, that's 606 units going in on a two-lane road, and those 606 units are gonna have to come back out. Traffic is gonna be horrendous. We're not even gonna be able to get in or out of our air park. They talk about water. They talk about noise. Silver Bit is a mile and a half to the west, and we can hear them sitting on our front porch in our air park announcing the next spectator or competitor. You wanna talk about dust? You can come out of Wickenburg and see Silver Bit when they're roping, and the dust just flubbing in the air. It doesn't make any difference. You've already given those people a permit. But the problem is, is that Maricopa County, and we're so far out there that you don't have the enforcement capabilities to enforce what you've already permitted. So they talk about the two-lane road. That road has, is a 30-foot road with no ditches, and the fences are on the easements. You don't have any room to, to make that a four-lane road. So that's gonna be a problem as well. I'm definitely opposed to the project, but I'm, I'm not opposed to the project, but I am opposed to the location of the project. And the water is a problem, as everybody said, and, and I don't believe from an engineering standpoint, once they clean this ground off, that they're gonna be able to make the water run where they want to. It's gonna come right down the road, right through Lee and Carolyn's back door and right through Sampley. And it's gonna come with everything that it's got, because when we, when it rains out there, we have what we call sheet water. And it just flows right across the top and goes wherever it wants to, and there's no channeling it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions for Dale? Thank you. Missy Hunter, if you'd like to speak.
Hi, I'm Missy Hunter, 48013 North 508th in Eagle Roost. I've been listening to all of this and just noticing that it's very nice how they presented how they're gonna fix everything. But there is like, if you look at it, there's a lot of hoops they're gonna have to jump through to even make this work legally. So it's great, but then you don't understand how it's gonna impact that community. It's a, it's a dark sky community. It won't be anymore. It's gonna be allowed and all that. One of the things I thought was interesting with the engineer is he talked about the grass wash. He said, oh, it floods all the time since the 80s. Cool. Okay, it does flood. It, in, the first time I ever saw it, it was like going through a lake. Another time, it's like a river coming through there. So, oh, we're gonna widen it, but they're expecting it to flood, because it does. You go the other way, Eagle, Eagle, Eagle Eye the other way from like 10, there's also a tiger wash. Semis get stuck there. It's, they're trying to fix it, but cars get stuck all the time. That wasn't addressed. He said, yes, it floods. What's the solution? So we've run into, it's, it's a community you have to learn, and I, you know, I talked to some of the people here that were more approve of it. They said, well, I live out there. I know how to drive through that water. Cool. What about the other people that are visiting? And it may not rain at that point, but the problem is you're gonna have that, the rivers are gonna flow. I don't care if you put in ditches or whatever. It's still gonna flow. It's still gonna go through down the hill. That's what happens. It goes down the hill. So we already have flooding, and we've done everything we can, but having them at the top of the hill, no matter what you're gonna do, it's gonna, it's gonna flow downhill. That's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Missy from the commission? Thank you. Is there, let's check online real quick. Is there anyone online that has a hand raised or wishes to speak?
I'm not aware of anyone online that wishes to speak.
Okay, and just to make sure, did we, did we hear from everyone that wished to speak on this case before we give the applicant another minute? Do you wanna with the applicant? Perfect. Okay, so anyone that just in favor or opposition, we wanna give you, up to, I'll, we'll give the applicant a moment just to give us some clarification. If you would please address those things that were shared today from the opposition, that would be helpful.
My name is Cody Sofel. I represent the project. I'd like to thank my team that's done a great job in planning and zoning. A lot of the questions that have been brought up by the opposition have, are good questions, but they can all be answered in the narrative report that we put into this project. The engineers did a great job engineering all the floodwater. The, the only thing that I don't think anybody mentioned was the smell and the aroma we've done. Nobody knows, but we've also acquired another 640 acres in Salome, so all of the manure, the waste will be trucked off of there to Salome, put on another hay field in Salome to, to bring back, to put, put everything to good use is what we're trying to do, and with some of the, the things that have been brought up, like the air park, the, the safety in that, Jim has done more than enough research with the, with the air, air park in Scottsdale with the safety with the homes that are so close to that. We did that in one of our town meetings to address the safety of the, of the air park and the landing zones and the crash zones, but we're just wanting to bring more to Aguila. We've been out there for about 15 years ourselves, and we like the neighborhood, and we've studied it from Surprise to Aguila, and we've found with the BLM bordering us that the people can really utilize the BLM to, to see Arizona's beauty and to enjoy the desert as well as, as sharing it. We wanna make Aguila a better place and bring more to the community. We've already agreed to help the fire department with whatever their needs are for safety concerns and, and address some of the local, the safety concerns with the local sheriffs and stuff like that have provided. But if there's any other questions about the flooding and drainage, drainage, if anything, I could dare say that we'll be holding back more water once the project begins than is flooding off of there now as we speak. Is that correct in saying that? So I think at this time, we, we've given a, a great presentation. Our team's been great. The planning and zoning has been great. We appreciate your time, and if there's any questions, we would be more than happy to answer any of them. Like I said, the narrative report speaks for itself in, in most of the opposition.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Downing. The
And lean right into that microphone. That'd be great.
Our project is on the west side of Eagle Eye Road, and the drainage in that area is from south to north. Grass wash crosses Grass Wash crosses Eagle Eye Road to the north of us. And so the property on the west side of Eagle Eye Road doesn't contribute runoff to the Grass Wash on the east side of Eagle Eye Road. So it doesn't affect the amount of water that flows across Eagle Eye Road in Grass Wash. And one other thing, your question about 500 pound cattle versus 1,000 pound cattle? The 1,000 pound cattle cost too much to feed.
Fair enough.
I think, thank you very much, Chairman, and also members of the commission. I just want to wrap up by acknowledging that we, if we move forward today and if we are approved, we want to be good community partners. So whatever issues that do remain, I, I wouldn't be here representing JTL properties or this project had I thought that they wouldn't commit to something like that. So with that, I appreciate your time and if there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission or the applicant or anyone else that's here in attendance today?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Please go ahead.
Somebody else on the-
Go ahead, Commissioner Lando. We'll have Commissioner Lando and then whoever's next. Go ahead.
My question is, we've heard a lot about traffic control. What is the plan for that with, on event days? Because it doesn't sound like the sheriff's department is very nearby. So who will control the flow of traffic for that?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up Cody for that one. Thank you.
There's been a speculation that there's going to be this great vast of traffic all at once. And the way that these events are designed is they're spaced out. So it's not like there's going to be 600 trucks and trailers show up at one time. For an example, there might be what we call an open roping. We're the best, best in the best come, and they're going to do it at their event at like 10. Then we're going to have the middle aged guys show up and they might rope at like one. And then the older guys, the 50s, 60s and elders are going to rope at three. And we're going to wrap it up by five-ish in the afternoon. So it's not like it's a mass, everybody's there at once. It is spaced out for traffic flow and, and for that reason, very much because we don't want to make a major traffic jam. So the events are spaced out accordingly for that purpose, part of that purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Does someone else have a question? Other commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Dan Zison. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the RV part of this and we didn't hear a lot about that. I think I know, but I wanted to know about clarity on the percent RV park full. Is that only during the 80 events? So like it says, month one is 90% full. Does that mean it's 90% full during that event or during that month?
If one of you would address that question.
The RV park is based on the tourism that comes in and out. It's not like it's, we might have a handful that come and stay for the whole season, but a lot of them will come and go with the events that might last for two or three days. So they'd stay for two days or two nights, for example. It's not that there's 150 RV spots that are full for 364 days of the year. Does that clarify?
Commissioner, do that answer your question?
Well, yeah. So does that mean, I mean, is it available to rent when there's not an event?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that answers my question.
Yeah, so there's spaces for whenever.
Right.
And once it's full, it's full.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions? From the commission? All right, one last chance for public forum before we close our public forum. I think we've got, I think we've heard from your server. I get it. So we're going to go ahead. If there's, if there's anyone that has not had the opportunity, we could go back and forth all day long. Trust me, we really could. So if there's no one new that hasn't had the opportunity, we're going to close the public forum and part of this conversation. And now we're going to enter into discussion as a commission and as a staff. First, I'll ask the commission for your comments, for your questions, for your, you know, general where you're at. Let's talk about this. Anyone? If, so no one's jumping to the microphone, so I'll just keep talking here. Would, and I don't know who can address this, but obviously these are, what makes these difficult cases is there's competing interests, right? We all want different things. Some want, you know, more jobs, some want more, you know, more quiet. I just, it's, it's, it's difficult when we want one thing and, and then that, so they're competing. We have to weigh the interests here. For me personally, the things that caught my attention that were brought up by those that are opposed to this or the, the water, the, the traffic, those kinds of things, and we hear this on these kinds of cases. It's my understanding that the reason we go through the planning process is to make this a better, you know, better than it was before. So if someone would speak to the, to the water issue, and we don't need a long explanation, but they will be required and they go through the process that they're can't, at a minimum, there's got to, they got to prepare for this 100 year tenure event, right? If someone could speak to that, how, how the, they will be, if whatever happens here, but if this is developed or given some permit, they will have to meet a higher standard that exists currently, is my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, there will be a construction permit required to establish commercial use of the site. At a minimum, there will be a grading permit. Part of construction permitting are building safety clearances, zoning clearances and drainage clearances. The purpose of the drainage clearance is to ensure that a post-development scenario either maintains or improves upon historic flows. So there will not be increased adverse impacts, flooding, inundation, upstream, downstream.
Thank you. And that was one component of it, right? There's the traffic, there's the dust. I mean, there's dust out there now. There will be more dust with more people. We get that. And, and I believe most of these things, I was looking at the stipulations, not all of them are stipulated. But we might want to consider, I don't know where the commission is, but maybe I'd like to hear from additional commissioners to find out the, just the pulse of where the commission's at on this case. I invite, invite your comments at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could answer, I don't think I answered. There, I don't believe we have any conditions addressing noise or amplified speakers. And we don't have any specific conditions to lighting, correct? Their narrative does include comments about dust control in the arena.
The only condition to lighting is that lights must be off by 11:00 PM.
Chairman, this is Commissioner Hernandez. I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
So I think, first of all, I think it's, it's very impressive that the community of Aguila made the long trek down there to show their opposition to this case. You know, well done. I wish every case had that kind of participation from the public. But I think this is an extreme rural location. I don't feel that this is a good fit for the zoning of this particular location. And that's hard for me to say, you know, coming from a farming background and, and, you know, I'm very pro agriculture and roping. And I love to see the young, the youth of our community do types of things like this instead of sitting behind a screen. So, you know, it really pains me to say this, but I just, I don't feel this is a good fit in the zoning for an application like this. Possibly if it were closer to US 60 or maybe on the other side, I think that might bode well to that. But I think it will be a burden on the community to have that kind of traffic in and out of there. Another big concern for me is public safety and as well as the safety of participants that are, you know, in these rodeos and ropings. I mean, God forbid if someone gets hurt, that is a very long lead time for emergency services to get out there. So with that, I'm kind of in favor with staff's recommendation for denial on this. But that's just my two cents. And, you know, if anybody else has any comments, I'd like to hear those as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Other comments, questions? Get the pulse. Let's find out where this is going.
I've got another question, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Dan Zison.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Dan Zison.
I guess this is more of a question for the applicant I should have asked earlier. But what, why this spot? Why, why is this specific spot for this? Why not another spot? It seems like you find a lot of different spots that it doesn't have an airstrip close to it. But is there something specific?
Well, I'll allow the applicant to come up. That's not, I guess, what we're doing here today. We're just looking at the case before us. That's just what they've chosen. No, why? No, I don't know. So I mean, it's not, if your question, if you want to know what the applicant saw in this site, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing on this particular case because we're being presented this particular parcel, this particular property. And if it was something else, they'd have to come back with another case. But would you like me to ask the applicant, Commissioner?
No, that makes sense.
I'm sorry?
No, that's okay. That makes sense.
Okay, yeah. So, so essentially, yeah, there could be a lot of reasons, but I don't think that's the purpose of what we're doing here today. So this particular case, this particular parcel, this is what they're wanting to do and they're going through the process. So that's what we're, that's what we're doing.
I guess the comment then would be, yeah, for me, I don't think this is an appropriate spot. Or I'm with staff on this. It's, it just seems like they could want somewhere else. So I don't think it's appropriate right here at this location.
Thank you. Thank you for those, those comments. Well, unless anyone else wants to opine, I know that, I sense where this is kind of going. I, this is hard for me because we hear cases, right? You want cell phone towers, but you don't want cell phone towers. You want, you want a, you want a place to shop, but you don't want a shopping center. You want, you want this, this something great for the community that brings jobs. You want that, but we don't want that which comes with it. So they're competing interests. This is difficult. I'm of the mindset where, I love that so many are out here stating your opposition today. And that's why this is being recommended, is my guess, because they've gone through the process. They've, they've looked at drainage. And there's one thing I know about county staff is the last thing the county wants is to have a drainage problem. The last thing we wanted is to have a county as a traffic problem. You know, that's, that's the last thing we want, and that's why we go through this, and this is good planning. To me, I thought it's a great presentation. I thought they've addressed all these things and I, and but if, you know, what I, what I didn't ask, which I, I don't know that it's in our presentation anywhere, is where are all these people? I've heard what they said, you know, that the people close by don't want it, but everyone not close by wants it. But, and I don't know that. I didn't see that graphic of where they are. But there's some close that want it and some that don't, and we'll be split on this. So it's difficult for me. It may not be the right place, but it's also, will there ever be a right place that you can get to and serve a committee? I don't know. So any other questions before I entertain a motion? Or any, any comments to potentially share with the commission where you're leaning?
Chairman, real quickly, the last couple pages of your packet include the location of support-
Oh, good. I need to. There's only a thousand pages.
There's excerpt in page A. If you go to the very end of this case, all the attachments, and go back one page, there's a map for you.
Of the main? It'll take me five minutes just to scroll.
I can give you a hard copy.
I'll tell you, there's been a lot of work done on this. That's for sure. I think I see it here. That's a great report. And I'm sorry, we've closed the public comment. I see that there. I'm looking at that right now. Yeah, and I'm sorry, that's all, and we can, but I'm going to, yeah, this is tough. I think, I think it's, wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't it be a great project, but we certainly don't want to do it if people don't want it. But that's not always the reason to not do a project as long as we cover all the right things. And so I, I'm going to yield to whose district this is to bank a motion, but I'll entertain a motion at this point and let's see where this goes.
As Commissioner Hernandez, I will make a motion on case. Hold on, I'm trying to get to the case number because I scrolled all the way to the bottom of that document. That's a thousand pages long, so it's taking me a second to get back up there.
It's Z 2023-0, I'm sorry, Z 2022-171.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for case Z 2022-171 for recommendation of denial.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Let's call for a roll call vote, Rose will be.
Commissioner Dan Zison?
Yes.
Commissioner Lando? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, that's a recommendation for a denial by a vote of four to one.
Okay. So that, that request was denied. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate your input. You're welcome to stay. But thank you. That's very helpful for us and appreciate the good work of staff. So we'll move on to our next case. We'll just give just a minute here for the room to clear, so we're not competing here. Okay, thank you for all your patience. I'd be able to go on to agenda item number 12.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Z 2023-089, known as Carefree Garage Condominiums in District 5, is a site approximately five acres on the south side of Carefree Highway west of 7th Street. It's located within the Carefree Highway Senate Corridor in the Daisy Mountain, New River area plan, designates the future land uses commercial. The applicant's requesting rezoning to C2 CUPD for development of garage condominiums. And will point out that this is a self-storage facility, not residential despite the condominium. That's just the ownership regime that is proposed. The CUPD overlay will limit the use of the site only to the self-storage facility and not all ancillary uses and not all otherwise C2 entitled land uses. Staff notes, the applicant's also requesting reduction in the maximum allowable height to 30 feet to mirror the- to 30 feet to mirror the surrounding residential zoning. Uh, City of Phoenix did express some concerns initially, um, in that their, uh, this is in their misplanning area and they designate the area for zero to two, 200 square acre residential. But the city did provide a list of preferred conditions that have been incorporated to, uh, the extent possible. These include enhanced landscaping requirements and the addition of a multi-use trail on Carefree Highway. Uh, staff received three mails of opposition and two emails of support. The opposition centered around, uh, just general opposition to development of any kind at, along this site, uh, a, a commercial, and then, uh, a desire for land adjacent to the highway to remain undeveloped, uh, you know, to promote the Senate Corridor. The, uh, the support email highlighted, uh, recommended conditions such as limiting the uses on the site as reasons to consider support. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion for approval of Z two thousand twenty-three zero eighty-nine, subject to conditions A through N uh, in your packet. And I'm glad to try and answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gerard or anyone else on staff? Great. Is the applicant here? I show it's Corey St. Germain. Is that who you are?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Corey St. Germain, uh, six oh seven, uh, Hartford, Scottsdale Avenue. And thank you for your time, Chairman, Board, everyone's staff. Again, they did a great job helping us with this. And, um, for this project, we think it's the right fit for the Carefree Corridor. It's a really low traffic area. We think that we put a nice project together, again, that will fit with the Carefree Corridor and, uh, really excited about it. We've had a lot of interest in it. And again, I think the comments from the residents as far as, you know, the impact on traffic, we were, you know, confident that it's very low there. I know there's some concern on lighting. Would you like to, you know, meet all those, uh, qualifications as well? So.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? Uh, was that the end of your term?
Yeah.
Perfect. Just making sure.
Did a great job of presenting for me, so.
All right. Um, is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Anyone in the room? If not, is there anybody online that would like to comment on this case?
We're not aware of anyone online.
Okay, hearing none. We'll, uh, close the case for public comment. And, uh, any discussion, any questions from the commissioners?
One question for staff, based on my reading of your, your report, it sounds like the, the few opposition letters that we've received, most, if not all of those, um, concerns have been addressed and would be, um, captured in the, the recommendations. Is that an accurate summary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Landau, other than the opposition that simply wanted land along the highway to remain undeveloped natural.
By it not being there at all.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Landau. Landau, sorry. Read a bunch of things. Uh, any other questions from the commission? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion on case number 12.
Um, I will present a motion to approve with conditions of case, um, Z two zero two three zero eight nine.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Hernandez. I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. We have a motion and a second. Let's roll call vote, please. Rosalie.
Commissioner Dan Zison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chairman Arnett?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval, recommending approval for, by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. I believe we move on to our last case, number 15. And here you are, ready to go.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Case Z two zero two two, one, eight, five is a special use permit for a wireless facility located on approximately 600 feet, a 600-foot area of a rural 43 lot in the northwest corner of Rosier Road and 239th Avenue in the Buckeye area of Supervisor District Four. The request would allow the development of, of a stealth monotree wireless facility located in the rear of a residential lot. The special use permit requests deviations for up to 12-foot diameter antenna array and a setback changes for up to 20.2 feet and 110 feet, where 160 feet is required by the Maricopa County zoning ordinance. The current tower location and stealth design has been chosen after discussion with the proposal, uh, with concerned neighbors. Staff has received neighbor opposition from the two, from two individuals representing one parcel, as well as comments from the city of Buckeye regarding design concerns. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion of recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Z two zero two two, one, eight, five, subject to conditions A through G. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? For staff at this point? Hearing none is the applicant here. Just step up and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you. Thanks for waiting so long. You got a little entertainment while you were here.
Sure did. Can you hear me?
I can't. Is that on?
I don't.
Is it the other one, maybe? Are there two? What is that? I don't know.
Can you hear me now? Oh.
There we go.
Go. Thank you. Good morning. Declan Murphy is my name, representing T-Mobile and Towercom. The address eighty-two, eighty-three North Taten Road in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'd like to thank staff for, uh, all the time and effort on this one. We have been, um, looking in this area for a number of years to, uh, address a gap in coverage for T-Mobile. And there's tremendous growth out there, um, new homes, et cetera. And, uh, we finally, um, did, um, find a willing landlord, as in the subject property owner, to work with us and lease us some space, um, for this site. At the time, um, the, the lease negotiation and the whole process had been going on for some time. And, uh, when we first designed this site, um, there was vacant land to the north. We weren't really aware that there was a home going into the north. And so, uh, the preference of the property owner was to place our site in the north west corner of the property, which we did. And then, um, I was contacted by the immediate neighbor to the, to the north, Ms. Vargas, and, you know, realized that, um, a home was being planned for that property. So we, we worked out a compromise in that we moved, and this was, of course, was at the, the, um, pleasure of the property owner. Um, but we, we ended up redesigning the site to move it further south away from the home and designing it to be a stealth tree, which, um, Ms. Vargas seemed to be happy with, with the compromise. And so, um, I have spoken to Ms. Vargas on a number of occasions while we were redesigning the site to, to, uh, to try and find, um, you know, a middle ground, if you like. And I've spoken to, um, I believe the other letter of opposition, Mr. Harvey, who was further north. My conversation with Mr. Harvey was essentially he was just opposed to the site. I think, um, he just, um, purchased the property to resell it and, um, was kind of convinced that this would impact his overall values, which we disagree with and really don't have any, um, or he really didn't have, provide any type of basis for that. But, um, with that, um, I've been working on sites in Maricopa County for 20 years, so we always try and be a good neighbor, um, which is what ended up happening here in terms of coming up with a design that was more agreeable and the location more agreeable to the neighbors to the north. We already have, uh, given the growth out there, we already have, um, another carrier that would be willing to co-locate on this tower. And I, I expect just my own opinion that there will be eventually probably at least three carriers on this site based on the, the, the type of growth that is out there and the number of rooftops that are going in, uh, to the west. So with that, um, I would be happy to, um, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? You won't be here in 25 years, so, you know, someone else could still hit at that point. Uh, thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Is anyone else that wishes to speak on this case? Anyone online that has notified you they'd like to?
Oh, I just got a raised hand. I haven't communicated with this person, so I don't know. Do you want to? You want me to let them speak or you want me to follow up first?
Well, shall we see who it is?
Okay. Um, Elvin, Elvin, I've unmuted you if you want to speak.
Hello? Hello?
Good day. Go ahead.
No, this is My name's, my, my name's Elvin Cruz. I, I live, uh, two, three, eight, five, seven, West Corona Avenue. Um, fairly new to the area. I was just wondering who the other carrier was currently.
Well, I thi- I think there's interest. Does that have anything to do with our case? I, I don't know that it does. So we're here to meet with, uh, so I appreciate your, your question. That could be something you could visit with the applicant about. There, the, the case before us is whether or not to put in this tower. Who the carrier is, is.
Well, that would affect whether or not I would be in opposition or approval.
Oh, got it. Well, no, I, I get it. Um, so you can state for the record which carriers you would not, you would support or wouldn't support, but.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant indicated it's T-Mobile and AT&amp;T.
T-Mobile, yeah. He represents T-Mobile, and I think he made reference there might be other carriers. I don't know who those are, but today before us, it's T-Mobile and AT&amp;T.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Any other, uh, comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you being on the line today. Any other?
There are no others online.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I will entertain a motion on this case. Wait, I should ask, are there any questions for staff and any other further comments by the commission before we do that? All right. Now we'll entertain a motion.
This is, uh, Commissioner Hernandez. I'll make a motion for case, uh, Z two zero two, two, one, eight, five for recommendation of approval.
There is a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second. Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. There's a motion and a second. We'll now do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Dan Zison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Chairman Arnett?
Yes.
Chairman, uh, that's a motion recommending approval by a vote of five to zero.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there anything else we need to bear aware of, staff? Kind of walked into a storm here this morning, didn't I? But thank you very much. Thank you for all your good work. I'm always reminded by a professional, how awesome you guys. So thank you very much. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.